I hear no. Do this. Good evening. I'd like to call to order our meeting of February 24th, regular meeting, 2016. Roll call. Let me see. All members are present, Kim. And would you mind standing and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business is our consent agenda. We have two very important donations, so I think we'll take those first. Would you have those papers? I'll let the superintendent announce those, and we'll, one at a time, we'll vote on them.
Okay. The first, both of these donations are from the Wilmington Education Foundation. We're very appreciative for their, that funding. And the first one is actually to help fund the 2016 STEM Fair, which is happening this year at the end of April, and that's in the amount of $3,080.
So I entertain a motion to accept the Wilmington Educational Foundation donation provided in the form of a grant in the amount of $3,080. Mrs. Bonish.
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Burns. All those in favor? Unanimous, Kim.
The second donation, again, also from the Wilmington Education Foundation, is for their Curriculum Grant Program. They had several folks apply for grant, and they're awarding grants to three different programs this year. One, actually, two are at the middle school, and one is for squid dissection program, and the other is for novel studies, to purchase novels for a novel study. And the other grant is being awarded to the Shawshin School that was written by Principal Lisa King to offer continued training to mindfulness to students. They've been doing that for the last eight weeks, using a consultant from Reading, from Village Parenting, and this grant will allow them to extend that. They've done three classrooms. This will allow them to extend that to three additional classrooms. And that total amount for the three grants is $4,487.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to accept the Wilmington Educational Foundation donation provided in the form of grants in the amount of $4,487. Mr. Bjork.
So moved, with the hopes that we'll see calamari served at the middle school.
(laughing). Second, Mrs. Burns. All those in favor? Unanimous, Kim. And we really can't thank enough the Wilmington Educational Foundation. We, the school system totally appreciates that. All right. Our next item, we're going back to the list on the consent agenda. The first one would be approval of minutes, February 10th, 2016, regular session, and warrants G 415, R 215, and L 31. Mrs. Burns.
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Brusad. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Payroll warrant, 117, 2016. Mrs. Burns.
So moved.
Okay. Do we have Mr. Oh, Mrs. Bonish. Second. All those in favor? Okay. Five in favor, two abstain, Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane, Kim. Warrants CB10. Okay.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve warrants CB10.
Okay. Mr. Bjork. And all those in favor? Six in favor, one abstain, Mrs. Burns. And our last one warrants sped 15 and sped 16. Mrs. Bonish.
So moved.
Okay. Second, Mr. Mullis. There's a noise doing it. Thank you. (laughing). I didn't want to leave you out. Sorry. All those in favor? Okay. Six in favor, Mrs. Burns abstain. Thank you. Oh, now we have a highlight of our meeting. Deana is here tonight with her student representative report.
Thank you for that introduction. First off, I wanted to say, bring up the point that next week is the Spring Fling on March 4th, and I wanted to go back to the fundraising point of view of that, and how it not only benefits the class of 2018, but it is also benefiting the class of 2019. So it's co-sponsored with the freshmen's and sophomores this year. And as well, the Costa Rica trip is coming in April 2016. They have had a poetry slam at Barnes and Nobles for it, to fund for it. And as I said, they're also selling the hot chocolate every single Friday up to March. And obviously, that's a no-brainer. No, who doesn't like hot chocolate, especially in this weather? So that's a really big success. And last week, the France and Italy trip took place, and the World Cultures Club will be talking about it tomorrow with a guest speaker, Madison Finn, who is also one of the presidents in World Cultures Club. And she'll be talking about the exciting adventures that she had with her friends, and the new culture that she had experienced, and how different of a lifestyle it is in Europe than it is in Wilmington. There's a big difference there. Obviously, it's Europe. And also, a new club has formed, the Engineering Careers Club, and its first meeting is tomorrow. And I like how there's the Medical Careers Club, there's Engineering Careers Club. It shows how each club is catering to someone's needs, like, oh, I don't know if I want to become a doctor, I'll join the Medical Careers Club and see how that might increase my inspiration for becoming a doctor or a nurse, or anything in that career. And it creates a learning environment that exposes us to a career that anyone could be interested in. And it shows how Wilmington High School prepares us for the future, but it also shows that each learning experience is showing us how life is in the real world. Just going to school one day and the after-school going to a club meeting will show you, oh, this is how I would behave, or how I would associate life, like how my parents would be doing in their own career. And that is my report today. It's very short, because coming back from vacation, it's basically what I had. And what I wanted to really talk about is that this is last week of Black History Month, obviously, and I wanted to end with a quote from Malcolm X. It says, going back to the education point of view, is that "Education is our passport to the future. For tomorrow belongs to the people who prepare for today." Just sink that in.
I wouldn't have attributed that to him, but that's very nice. Excellent quote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or anything? Well done. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Our next item of business is the superintendent's report.
And my report is pretty brief as well. I just wanted to update the committee on some upcoming dates to make them aware. On March 4th, we have a C, our next CIT day, so that's an early dismissal day. Also, on March 4th, I think actually, Deana mentioned it, the Wilmington High School Spring Fling event. March 5th, International Thespian Society Theater Festival Performing Arts in the high school auditorium all day. That's also a day, March 5th, that about 22 or 23 of our staff will be attending the Federation for Children with Special Needs Conference down in Boston as well. And on March 11th is the Wilmington High School Talent Show, which is in the auditorium at 7:00 PM.
That's nice. Okay. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Our next item of business, we are, we are moving fast through this tonight. Our old business is the electronic device policy. Second reading.
Ask Mr. Ellis if he wants to come up and join us. You will see that there was a significant amount of editing done to the policy since the last presentation of the policy. We provided two copies. One is a marked-up version that shows you the changes that were made since the original policy, and the other is a clean copy. So I think, most notably, there was a concern specifically under, I think it was part number five, Part B, around teaching staff and, you know, what teaching staff could and could not do with respect to monitoring and controlling the use of student devices. So we've amended that language a little bit, and I think you'll see the language obviously gives the teacher, empowers the teacher to make the decision about how and when technology will be used in the classroom, and goes on to state that while confiscation is not preferred, it's a measure of last resort, it doesn't prevent the teacher from being able to confiscate the device for a class period if such action is warranted based on the student's behavior. So that's one of the changes, and I think a lot of it is also just restructuring it, so it was easier to read as well. Neil, did you want to add anything?
No, that's, you pretty much covered it, yeah. We'd thrown it out to all the principals. There are, there's assistant principal on the, on the original committee, but, or two principals, it was principal and assistant principal, but we threw it out to all the principals. They put in their feedback. They commented on a couple things. And one of the people on the committee grabbed it and just rewrote it. Moore Tucker did a lot of work, just kind of looking at it, you know, for me, and, and pretty much rewrote it before I, for me, so, yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, sorry.
Mrs. Burns.
There was, in rereading it and kind of crunching on it, there's two, two questions I had with regards to it that I would, wanted to bring forth to the board to get their input. In number five, proper use. I think a lot of times it can be easily overlooked unintentionally, but I would like to see, I would like to make a suggestion that at the end of the last, the last sentence that was changed, where it says, "Classroom teachers have the right to allow or disallow the use of devices during instructional examination assessment time." There, and in B, number one, where underneath "Examples of inappropriate or disruptive use include but not limited to," I would like something, to either say something not otherwise specified by an educational plan, because I, although it doesn't need to be stated, I think it's a helpful reminder that with technology especially, that there's some students who do have electronic devices as a part of their educational plan, and I wouldn't want something to unintentionally be overlooked in that aspect. And if there's an alternative the teacher needs to take with respect to that, and in, in the classroom, that may be something that needs to be considered, and how that might look like. And then the second piece, I don't know, should I, should we start there? And I only have one other piece that I wanted to kind of ask, inquiry.
Yeah, yes, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
Start there.
That was my, my inquiry is, my first inquiry is that if we could-
Oh, no, I want you to go on, but did you want to start there, just to have a discussion?
I didn't know what would be, what would be best, if you wanted to meet, have a discussion of that piece, and then inquire about the second question I had.
I think it'd be easier to go one at a time.
Sure.
I think so.
Okay.
So you want, Neil could answer that, is it?
Oh, yeah, no, I think it's a good idea. Yeah, it's a great idea. Yeah, we'll just, we can throw that in easily. But the part, the, the end of the A, is it the same topic you'd like to write into there as well?
It's sort of like the comma, not, you know, not otherwise specified by an ed, student educational.
Okay, yeah, no, that's a good-
However, the wording, what you think, whatever the verbiage, the easiest way for that verbiage to appear, I would certainly leave in your hands, but I think just as a reminder that with IEPs or inter-4s or something, that it should be considered, you know, and an alternative strategy would need to be devised.
Yeah. I mean, you would hope that, you know, that common sense would prevail, but sometimes you've got to put it in there.
Yeah, but in the times though, or something of a, whatever the situation might mitigate, that's not always the first thing that comes necessarily. Not, not to put anybody at a disadvantage, per se. It's just that I thought it would be just a supportive reminder.
Sure.
Is simply that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mrs. Brusad.
I had a question regarding the same area, so I don't know if we'd want to just kind of follow through and comment on things.
I think we should keep it, right.
Section 5, Point A, where we, and also right above number four, definitions for student. I think the first time that we went through this, we had a discussion, although no vote, about the K through 5 students versus the middle school and high school students. Do we need to implicitly illustrate that in this because it's a policy? When we say students in this, I would question that.
Do you understand what she's asking?
Because in the, in the definition in section four, we say student, any individual currently enrolled in WPS, or in the WPS. So I know we had that discussion a couple of weeks ago when we did the first reading, and I think a couple of us expressed concern versus the younger kids versus the older kids.
I mean, I think, I think that the policy is broad, just, broad enough just to cover all age groups. I mean, I-
My question is, do, do we need to illustrate and show definition for which, which we're talking about and which applies to this policy?
Technology might look different from grade to grade. Was, I was, I was, I'm confusing that with the one-on-one initiative that was a part of the discussion at the same time, if that in itself was kind of what stemmed, you know what I mean?
It could, yeah.
That two pieces and, and-
It's getting a little blurry.
Yes.
I guess, I guess my, from my perspective, this policy says, if you're a teacher and you are in third grade, or fourth grade, or fifth grade, any grade, and a kid has a device in their bag or something, if it can be used to further, or, or used as a tool to, in addition to, to, to bring home whatever that is the teacher is trying to explain, or, you know, whatever it might be, that, that, to say, no, you don't have the, you don't have the ability to tell that kid that he can take it out and use it to help you in the classroom, I think it's, it's a service to the, to the teacher. So the reason we wrote it this openly, and, and most of the people who worked on this were from the elementary grades, that's their feeling on it. They would like the opportunity to use devices if they're available to them in the classroom to further what they're, what they're discussing.
Okay, thank you.
So.
The way the policy is written right now, if you look at section two, it does say the policy basically pertains to students in elementary, intermediate, and secondary levels. So it is, it is broad enough to cover all students. And then the decision through the policy is in the hands of the teacher in terms of what, when, how, is it appropriate?
Okay, thank you.
And if.
Mrs. Burns, did you, want to move on to the next?
Thank you. The, the second piece that I was kind of, I think I required more clarification because it almost sounds kind of contradictory with regards to what we're going to, what we discussed about the one-on-one initiative.
Which piece are?
Is, it's number D.
Okay.
Students should be cognizant that their fellow students may be distracted by the use of a device. Teachers may find it appropriate to change student seating in order to accommodate a student who is easily distracted. All devices should be set to vibrate or silent during class unless otherwise directed. I'm a little perplexed with, with that, and I think, like, as I said, I'm, I, I might not be able to, I might not be understanding it in the way it's supposed to be written, but going forward with regards to a one-on-one initiative, everyone will have electronic device. And the other aspect is, is, again, we talk about educational plans. Some students are required to sit at the front. It doesn't mean that's the student with the device that needs to be moved, per se, but I think, I'm concerned that that might not have a potential of, if a student is sitting at the front and he learns better at the front, not on a 504 or whatnot, to have that child moved because there's another child who is covered under, let's say, an IEP scenario. You know, I, I think that, I think the discretion of the teacher, I think any strategy the teacher would use, I think, would just make common sense, as to put it in a policy might be da, I don't want to say dangerous, I think it's a little excessive, but it may be not very conducive to, I mean-
I know, I know what you're saying. I guess that piece was a little bit of a holdover from the old plan. I think the teachers wanted in their, I mean, would it make more sense if, to say specifically if it were a phone, or, I, I mean, I would, I don't think-
You know, it's, we're talking about one-on-one, you know, we're rolling out one-on-one initiatives. You, it, it almost sounds kind of, well, everyone will have that device, you know what I mean? Everyone needs to be using it appropriately, which I think we cover in other areas of policy.
Mm-hmm.
I just, I just find it, it almost contradictory.
It's a little contradictory.
You know what I mean? It's a little, and I, I, I mean, I have no problem with the, the blue piece, all devices should be set to vibrate or silent during class unless otherwise directed. I think that's spot on.
Okay.
But I think the other aspect is problematic. I'd be happy to see it go, personally. I think teach, I think staff, you know, can certainly use the common sense with regards to what they need to do in order for every child to learn. I mean, that, I mean, and maybe if, if there's something more to that that I'm not, I might, may not be aware of.
No, I mean, I don't think-
I think teachers do a wonderful job in orchestrating.
Professional, I mean, they, they know through, you know, there are other, the things that, the other things that they need to, the other policies that we have with respect to 504s and IEPs, that they would know that a student in their classroom needs that accommodation, that they would not, that this would not affect that, that, you know, obvious-
They're also aware how all their students learn as well.
Sure, yeah.
Inclination, how they each do, but, and that's why I think common sense prevails at the professionalism.
Yeah.
That there, I would think that they'd be able to, without having to have it in a policy form, be able to work on strategies that will best fit the learners in their classrooms, which could look different from classroom to classroom with the, you know, mix, the mixing up certain students.
Could I just interject here a minute?
Please.
I think what the problem is, and I think you're totally right, we've put in a technique right there. The teachers would make the move as a technique, when, when there are various techniques a teacher could use. And we haven't put in specific techniques in any of the other parts of the policy.
Thank you.
So I think that, that that may be what the problem is.
Yeah, I actually don't, would, don't think that anybody here, in terms of administration or teachers, would have any issue with removing this.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think it's important to them. I think the rest of the policy covers that essentially anyway, so, yeah.
The intent was just to be cognizant of, you know, that, to point out that we expect teachers to be cognizant if something becomes distracting and that they are going to deal with it, but I don't think it needs to necessarily be legislated to that specificity.
Policy perhaps?
Yeah.
Yeah, because what she's really asking is which one supersedes, which one is the most important?
Yeah, yeah, I know what you're saying.
This, or what the teacher's doing.
Sure.
Yeah. So I think that would be, if that's okay, we'll just take out that sentence before we vote on it.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Did you have a third?
Nope, that was it.
Oh.
Trying to be Wilmington-ismsen.
(laughing) Thank you. Do we have any other? Mrs. Carroll?
It's not actually a question, it's a comment. The policy's very good, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
But I do not agree with K through 5. But if that's what the teachers and everybody, I still think that's way too young to have, you know, their phone at their hands. But the policy's very good.
Thank you.
That's it.
I would have to say I totally agree. I agree with Mrs. Carroll in this area, but um-
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that I would add is, I think that if there's, there's, well, so Laura's here, an elementary teacher is probably not going to say, okay, boys and girls, everybody pull out their phone. In fact, that's going to be sort of anathema to them. But if, in the event that you have a student that has, be it a phone, or a small tablet that's their own, and we recognize that that student may be able to access differently, or represent differently, or engage differently, then you, they now have the flexibility to be able to use that. And I don't think it's about, I, I really don't believe that any elementary teacher, primary or intermediate, has an interest in sort of all of a sudden having all those kids pull their phones out, because I think it would be a bit of, bit chaotic.
Assistant is agreeing with you, so that's good. Yes, Mrs. Carroll?
And I agree with the tablet and the computer, and, you know, if that's technology, and if they're, that's how they're, you know, showing and doing the math problems. I just don't like, I think these kids, K through 5, are still too young to have a cell phone. I mean, we can't even control the high school kids with cell phones, never mind K through 5.
But that's really a parent issue, you know?
That's really a parental issue.
To say, don't provide just, if, if, if you don't feel that, then don't provide that. If you don't feel like your child is at a place where they can manage the device.
Right. Okay, well, then that's a good point, too.
You need to have a phone, you know, we're just saying, if there's something available. And, I mean, I don't think any of the kids, K through three or four even have phones. This would just be like, you know, the kid has a tablet, or, or has a Chromebook already or something. I don't see kids that level having phones anyway, really.
Okay. Mrs. Brusad.
Can I just ask for a, a point of clarification? Under section B, examples of acceptable use, point number four, connecting through social media or back-channel discussion or chat initiated by the classroom teacher. What is back-channel discussion?
Oh, okay. So, so it's, it's been sort of a, I'm trying to think of the website. Who, was that, does it do back-channel though? Not really.
Thank you.
You can have conversations.
Yeah, you can, actually. Yeah, so, so I guess one simple sort of use of, of that would be, if you're in like a Google Doc, or in, you're in Google Classroom, you're in Google Doc, there's a, there's a simple chat feature on the side. So say, there's like, there are 20 kids, or even just like a group, say, we're all a group in the classroom, and we're all editing one document that we're working on. There's a chat on the side where you can be, you know, you can say, you know, I'm going to add this, or I guess you wouldn't be in a classroom, you could just turn to one and say that. But I guess if you were working with a kid on the other side of the world, and you were both working on a document, you could say, you know, I'm doing this, da-da-da-da-da, I'm going to add it right here, and you change it, and they change it, and you have to discuss why, what, how to properly do it. This, like, that's a back-channel, like, there's a discussion going on that's not happening in the classroom, it's happening virtually.
Okay.
A lot of conferences I go to, they do that often. They'll have a, they'll put up a URL for a back-channel website, and it's an online chat amongst the people in the classroom. So it's, you're not distracting from the, because you're having a, in a live classroom setting, the teacher could say, everybody stop, and all that kind of thing. But, you know, people will talk about the discussion that's going on with other people who want to talk about that topic in the moment while, while it's going on, but you're not distracting anyone.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
To add to that question, the security feature of that piece, if, let's say, a group is doing just, just what you're saying, would somebody in a different classroom who may be on, in, in their own Google Docs, have the capability of chatting with, let's say, their friends, who may be working at the same time? Is there a security feature, or is it limited that you can't access it? I mean-
Every applic, every application is different, every online thing is different. The one that goes with the document is only for that specific document, that chat.
Okay, so nobody can access it from a different-
No, but I mean, there are other tools that, you know, they could use to, to chat with each other while they're, they're doing, working on something, or the, like I was talking about, the back-channel, if the teacher puts up that URL to say, you know, while I'm discussing, I'd like you guys to, you know, throw down your ideas about, just off the top of your heads, as I'm talking about this topic. It might, you know, engage them more, and they can have a place to put the stuff, and other kids might see that and go, oh, that's a great idea. You know what else would be good? Would be do this. And then at the end of class, there's a whole thread of discussions and ideas.
That's great, but staying point, oh, like, point on topic, but my concern is that social piece, that shouldn't be there, you know what I mean?
Well, I guess-
How is that monitored? I'm just-
It's a, that's a more of a classroom management issue, I think. I don't, I mean, Jen isn't a lab all day long, and they do, they do have a lot of the classroom functionality.
They really do, and I mean, honestly, as a feature, it's not something that really distracts from the educational component of using the Google Docs.
I'm not concerned with that. I think that's a great idea, and a form of communication that's the least disruptive in a classroom. It's just that outside- Um, it's just that outside.
And that, the con- at least with the Google, it's, the conversation is live, so as soon as somebody leaves the, or both, all parties leave, that conversation ends. It's not like somebody could go back and actually read it. Um, I don't know if it records someplace on Google anywhere.
Yeah, I don't think so. But it's all different with different applications. I know what you're saying, you don't want kids chatting about, you know, are you going to be at that party this weekend?
Supposed to text you during their Chromebooks, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we're having a wicked chat.
That's my concern.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I, I know, it's, 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 that kind of stuff, um, you know, like I had said when we were talking about the one-to-one, um, you know, we will have digital, the digital citizenship piece. In this, in this document, it, it does talk about, you know, um, what's okay and what's not okay in my classroom. You know, this, in the syllabus posted on the wall, these are the things that you can and can't do, if you're coding them, just like you're writing on a piece of paper and you're passing it off to your friend. It's whatever you would do in the classroom anyways.
That's my biggest thing, especially with, with teachers who are not as familiar with technology in the educational process. I just want to make sure they themselves have enough support, whether it be on paper or however, to be aware of these certain things that could occur and how to counteract it.
Right.
You know, so that's.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do as much PD as we can with as many teachers we can get to, to take it, so.
Mrs. Brusette?
I think, so we have, two weeks ago, we introduced the one-to-one initiative, now we're having this discussion. In the last two weeks, a lot of things have bubbled up, and I am in support of the initiative, but I think there's some questions that have kind of percolated up. Um, in this discussion we're having right now, we're talking about, this is how it can be used, this is what we could do. I'm a visual learner myself, I need to see it in action, and I'm thinking maybe from a protect- practical standpoint, it would be helpful for other parents to see, how do you use it in your classroom? Let, let, let me see it in action. Can we get something scheduled?
Oh, we do.
Soon?
Yeah, it's, uh, we have one scheduled, right now it's scheduled for, I think it's April fifth, but I don't, don't mark me on that. Um, I wanted to do it a little bit sooner, we might be able to move it back. The, the district tech committee met and we decided on a, a date, but we can move that ahead a little bit.
I, I would recommend that we, we do it as soon as we can, because there's all these questions bubbling up and, and because we, it seems like it's a long way away for, for parents to purchase these devices, but that time's going to go awfully quick.
Yeah, it's not that, it's not that.
And people need to prepare for this, and I, I would like to get some of these questions answered just for myself. Let me see what this looks like. I get it, I'm excited by it and what its capability, but I want it, I want to see it.
I brought some, some Chromebooks.
Awesome. That's cool.
Um.
And then I, the other piece of it that's percolated up a lot about is the cost, and, and yes, I know we've outlined four different ways and what levels. I want to see numbers.
Yeah, Paul and I are, are working on those numbers, probably doing it tomorrow. Um, we're kind of really drilling down into the, to the nitty-gritty on that, so, uh, we should have those pretty soon. We're also uh, meeting, going, we're having a field trip up to Beverly um, to talk with them, um, because they've been doing it for four or five years now, and, um, how they worked all this stuff out and the numbers that they used and everything else, so.
I mean, I, I know we can do it, I just, I need to see it, I need more information.
Sure.
And I think if we get more of the information out as soon as possible, that might alleviate some of the discomfort with the whole big change. So just, as soon as we can, I think would be helpful.
Great. Yeah.
Do we have any other questions, or? Do you mean, you don't mean just for us, you mean just for, like a parent night?
However we do it.
Community night.
Information out to people.
Yeah, not necessarily, not at a school community meeting, but at a special meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because we don't get a lot of people coming to our school communities, unfortunately.
Yeah, we're gonna do one that's good, we'll have the Chromebooks out, so every parent will take one on their way in, um, and we'll do a live.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
That's really, okay.
That's really good, yeah.
Should be fun.
That'd be great. Thank, oh, yep, Mrs. Bonish.
Do we have a sense of how many teachers actually do this now with the, you know, whether it's with Chromebooks or with other devices?
I don't.
Are there any that don't use it? Don't use electronic devices?
Oh, I'm sure there are some that, that don't use it.
At all?
The, it's certainly growing, and the demand for the ones that we have right now is, is higher than we can supply them with the hundred and eighty, we have a hundred and eighty-seven that we have right now.
At the high school?
At the high school, and we have the three, we have seven, uh, seventy-five of them at the middle school. There are a lot of teachers using them, uh, there's going to be that, that chunk that we need to reach and, and really get more PD for and get them rolling on a, on a, on a daily basis, but, um, yeah, I don't have a, I don't have a number count for you.
That would be my, Mrs. Burns, thank you, I'm sorry to speak out. Um, that would be my concern, that in order for parents to buy in, they're going to want to be assured that the teachers
Sure.
have bought into this initiative as well, and that their child is going to get the full benefit of using this tablet in the majority of their classes, ninety-five percent, and not just two or three of their classes. That is imperative for, I, I would want that as a parent, to make sure that if I'm going to invest in this, that it's going to be utilized
Sure.
effectively and efficiently in the majority of the academic classes, if not more. I, I would want, that, before I could buy into it, tha- that's what I, I needed to be assured, and maybe other parents may probably would feel the same way.
What I would say is that it, it's kind of, um, it kind of feeds itself, so, you know, where we don't have enough right now, um, we're, we're limited to, you know, the teachers are limited to what they can, how often they can depend on getting a hold of those things. And with this tiered rollout, um, and more teachers come on board, and we can do it kind of more efficiently in, in that tiered process, and as kids come in with those devices, there's now, um, the ability to use them more efficiently, more often. So I would say that, you know, I would, I would, I guess I would look at, at it as, in the project sense that it's a four-year rollout, in that at the end of the four years, I, I mean, obviously, you buy it now, you want your kid to be using it as often as, as possible, and um, you know, those discussions can always happen between teachers and, and parents, and, um, you know, just, just like any tool or textbook, what, what, what are they learning and how, how are they learning it? Um, but I guess I'm focused on the, the four years, once everybody's got them, everybody's using them more often because they're more readily available. So I guess, I guess I could tell you like how often they're using them now, but I'm not sure if it would, if it would really tell you what it would look like once a whole freshman class comes in with them. So just, I don't know. We'll see.
Did you want to add anything?
Thank you.
Any other? Okay, thank you, thanks.
Sure.
Thanks, Neil, you appreciate it. Um, so what we would, let me see. Do we feel with these changes, we'll, we'll make a motion that with these changes included, we'll accept the policy? Does, are we ready to vote on, in other words, are we ready to vote?
I think so.
I could vote as long as with the changes that we discussed this evening. Yeah, and I think you thought that they would be okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. So, um, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the electronic device policy, J I C F B, with the changes that have been discussed tonight. Mrs. Bonish?
Sure.
Good. Do we have a second? Mr. Muus, are those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um. Our next item of business would be the new business school wellness committee presentation.
Yes, uh, and we have some special guests with us this evening, and we have, um, Mrs. Doreen Crowe, who is our director of, uh, health services. We have Laura Stinson, who is our K twelve, uh, physical education and health liaison, as well as a physical education teacher at the Woburn Street School, and uh, Mrs. Crowe is going to introduce their student representative to the advisory council.
Okay, welcome, good to see you.
Thank you. So thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. This is Christina Cox, you met her last year. Um, the other student couldn't be here tonight, she got scheduled to work, unfortunately, but Christina has been on, uh, the school wellness advisory council for a couple of years now. She's also a member of the medical careers club, and she is interested in a career in nursing. So I'm going to turn it over to Christina.
Thank you, welcome, Christina.
I'm Christina Cox, I am a school wellness advisory council student rep and high school senior. The mission of the school wellness advisory council is to educate, promote, and support health and wellness to enhance lifelong healthy behaviors. The diagram shown is the coordinated school health model, which was developed by the CDC Center for Disease Control. Research shows a clear link between health outcomes of young people and their academic success. Schools play a criti- critical role in promoting the health and safety of young people. The outcome is helping students to establish lifelong healthy behaviors. The whole school, whole community, whole child WSCC model focuses on the child at the center. New components are a safe school environment and family and community involvement. So, some wellness highlights from the district are the essential school health services grant, physical education and health wellness activities, updates from school food services, a student report, information on the new D E S C um, school wellness initiative at Woburn Street and staff wellness activities. So Wilmington Public Schools has been receiving essential school health grant funding from the Mass Department of Public Health for eight years. There are many components to the grant under the scope of services. Highlight a few, Mrs. Crowe, our director of nursing services, is providing mentoring to nurse leaders at the Woburn and Burlington Public Schools. Wilmington Public Schools is considered a role model district for the state for high standards of care in school services for health. Continuous quality improvement projects are im- implemented annually. This year's project involves student attendance tracking and school nurse interventions involving parent education on acute and chronic health conditions. This project is still being implemented and anticipated outcome will be that nursing interventions improve student attendance. S BERT stands for screening, brief intervention and referral for treatment. It's an evidence-based program that has been implemented in the high school for the past three years, using the Craft tool. And new this year to the middle school, S BERT was just implemented using the N I triple A tool. This population-based screening tool allows students the opportunity to have a discussion about substance abuse, identify early on if a student has a problem, and help them with any services. So this year sophomores were screened simultaneously during vision and hearing screenings. Only three percent of students were opted out by their parents. Twenty-two percent or fifty-three students received brief intervention. Seventy-five percent of students received positive reinforcement, and five students received inside referral services. Middle school screenings were performed just prior to February vacation week, and the results were compiled, so there, just compiled, so there's no graph. But grade seven students were screened also during vision and hearing screenings. One percent of students were opted out, eleven percent of students received brief intervention, eighty-eight percent of students received positive reinforcement, and one student received inside referral services. Overall, the screens were all received by students, and school nurses, and guidance counselors are pleased with the results. So, there was a student survey to evaluate the effort of S BERT. So, with the help from the middle and high school students this year, high school health teachers this year, the students were um, surveyed, and ninety-two percent of students reported that they answered the screening honestly, and seventy percent of students reported they can name two adults at Wilmington High School they could go to with questions about drugs and alcohol. For the middle school, more than ninety-four percent of students reported they felt privacy was respected, and they answered the screening questions honestly. Ninety percent of students reported they can name two adults at the middle school they could go to with questions about substance use. So there is current legislation moving forward that require all schools, districts, and mass agencies to issue initiate S BERT implementation to screen students in one high school and one middle school grade. Wilmington Public Schools is proud to be ahead of the curve and has been utilized as a role model for other districts in this initiative. So at the North Intermediate School, Mrs. Farrar, the school nurse, announces Physically Fit Friday every week. This year's fruit of the year is the peach. Mrs. Farrar provides health tips in a fun and humorous way during the morning exercises. Um, cardio in the classroom is another fun way to start the morning. Students do very late exercises at their desk every day. Students enjoy the fun activities to start their day, and physical activity stimulates cognitive development. Mrs. Farrar's Fun Facts are posted on the whiteboard just outside the nurse's office, and it's a way for fourth and fifth graders to learn about health. You can follow Mrs. Farrar on Twitter at Nurse Jane four oh nine, or follow her blog on Tumblr at Physically Fit Fridays. So, physical education and health, Mrs. Stinson has been using pedometers in PE class for years now with the Woburn Street School. She recognized significant student interest in using the device and developed a pedometer program for students. Families have the op- option to purchase a pedometer that can be used at home or at school. Learn, Move, and Balance is a program where students use stability balls in place of a chair in health education classes at the Woburn Street School. Major benefits include increasing core strength, student focus and alertness by enhancing sensory awareness, and improved posture. This year's PE and Health Night will be Thursday, March fourth, twenty-fourth, rather, six thirty to eight PM for grade threes, Woburn Street families to attend. The agenda includes physical health and activities and its cross-curricular. Move It in the Morning is a new program that started February first and is done during morning announcements every day. Um, so school food services, some updates are, the high school and middle school students celebrated Chinese New Year a day late on February ninth, due to the snow day. The menu featured tangerine chicken, egg rolls, fried brown rice, stir-fry vegetables, pineapple, and fortune cookies. A parent survey was implemented earlier this month with lots of great feedback, um, the results are coming. Mary Palin conducted taste tests with Miss Torquias' classes at the high school. Students sampled tangerine chicken, ta- teriyaki chicken, and French bread pizza. Students loved tangerine chicken and were torn between two French bread pizzas. And food services is proud to participate in the farm-to-school program. So, student report, the school breakfast program is still available at the high school every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Students can get breakfast, um, and breakfast is the most important meal today. The annual employee health and benefits fair is Thursday, April seventh, one to four thirty. Medical careers club students volunteer their time to help out the fair every year. So, Medical Careers Club recently, February second, students attended Melrose Wakefield Hospital and were able to observe areas of healthcare, like the emergency room, ICU, physical therapy, radiology. I job shadowed a nurse in the ICU, which was really exciting and interesting, I got to see like firsthand what goes on, and it really just confirmed that I want to be a nurse, and that's something I'm really interested in, it's really good. So, the D S E school wellness initiative improves the nutrition and physical activity environment in schools, and can improve student suc- success. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Wellness Initiative for Student Success is designed to bring together school wellness teams that include administrators, nutrition leaders, and physical education or physical activity leaders for the purpose of making changes at the school level. The Woburn Street School has taken on the challenge of this new wellness initiative. These are the multiple program elements as part of the new project. Some items are some complete and some are still in progress. Mrs. Stinson is leading the Woburn Street Wellness Team and hopes to complete most of the tasks by the end of the year. Um, shown on the slide is a photo from the Cupid Cafe Day on February twelfth. First and second graders will be enjoying special lunch themes like this over the next few months. This is a component of our smarter lunchroom scorecard. The Woburn Street School Wellness Team is proud to be representing Wilmington as leaders in health and wellness. Staff wellness, this, there are many staff wellness activities offered throughout the year. The annual employee health and benefits fair is scheduled for April ninth, one to four thirty at Town Hall. All town, school, and retired employees may take part in this program. This year there is acupuncture, ask the doctor, back pain, body and soul coaching, My Menu Match, kickboxing also. Way of Red Day for Women was celebrated on February twelfth, and blood pressure clinics were held to remind all educators to ke- take care of their hearts. According to the American Heart Association, hypertension or high blood pressure is a silent killer. Several staff took advantage of this opportunity and had their blood pressure checked at work. CPR and AED and epinephrine trainings are offered for staff via Wilmington University. Staff participate in these trainings every year, and they're always well-received. Staff participate in these trainings every year and they're always well-received. The annual walking challenge is being planned. Stay tuned for more information. Walking when done properly is a simple, free and easy way to get moving, moving and has many good health benefits. So, this right here is just a list of the School Wellness Advisory Council members. We hope you've enjoyed hearing about some of the wellness activities that are happening in the district and thank you for being, the opportunity to share what students and staff are doing to be healthy.
I'd thank Christina for taking this on by herself. She was supposed to share with another student. She did a fabulous job.
She did. Very good. Do we have any questions?
I have a quick question.
Um, at the high school, we, their only breakfast is Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays? For students?
Yep.
Yes. What about Tuesdays and Thursdays? I'm just...
Well, I think...
Opt-out days?
I, I think it was a way to s- to sort of pilot a breakfast program and get an idea of the interest from the students. Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Um, I think Mary Palin probably could answer that question best.
Better? Okay.
Yes.
I was just curious with some students, I mean Wilmington probably doesn't have a huge population but some students don't eat regularly per se if they're not in, in the school. And that would be my only inquiry as to, that's something that there is such a demand.
Yep.
If that's something that we might consider offering, uh, offering.
We can bring that back to Mary Palin. I, I think at this point she needs to evaluate
Sure.
if there's interest in, um, what the next steps would be.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Bure.
Question, not her. S-BERT?
Yes.
A, a brief intervention.
Yes.
Can you give me an idea of what that would entail?
So, um, when, so training is done with the, with the school personnel that participate or implement the tr- implement the screening. And that what that might entail is it's a conversation between a screener, which is either a school nurse or a guidance counselor, and the student. It's done privately, in a very private setting. Um, and it uses a validated tool. Um, the CRAFT with the high school students and the NI AAA two with the, um, AAA tool with the middle school students. Um, and the CRAFT tool asks questions about, um, riding in a car, whether they do substances alone. And so, there's an algorithm that's followed and a scoring system for this person's screening. And if, if the child scores all negative and knows zeros, then just positive reinforcement will be done. If, um, there was concern and there were some positive responses, then some brief intervention will be done. And, and how that's done is using something called motivational interviewing where you sort of get an idea of what the student feels about the problem and, and, and find a way to motivate them to make change. Um, so that would be part of the brief intervention. And it's brief, so it's, it's sort of done, it's done in about a ten-minute period if there's a positive finding. And then the student would be asked to come back and either see the nurse or their guidance counselor. Um, and if further brief intervention or evaluation or, or services were needed, then, then that would be taken care of as well. Did that answer your question?
It certainly did, yeah. I was curious about that. Thank you.
Um, I noticed in some of them, if I, if I heard you correctly, that some parents opt out of this for the students?
Yes. So, a letter did go home. Um, just like any screening, parents always have the option of opting their child out. And so, we, we do the passive consent. So, everyone is screened and parents, um, have to pa- have to actively opt their child out if they don't want them to participate.
And then, did they provide you with a reason or, and do you try to get them to do it again?
No, um, no. We, we don't really ask them for the reason, you know, it's their option if they want to opt their child out.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other questions? Fair, that was excellent. Thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Very informative.
Thank you.
And our next item of business would be the High School Program of Studies.
Yes.
And Ms. Peters is here from Wilmington High School, our principal, to talk about, I think the, the focus is going to be on the, the proposed changes as opposed to the entire document, what's, what's changed. We appreciate that.
Yeah, I did try to spare you all of the detail. Thank you for having me. I have, um, Bill Manchester and Kathy Mackles and Jen Fiddler part of the leadership team here as well in case you have some questions of them based on their changes in their, um, programs. Um, we have worked, uh, the CTLs and I have worked on developing a three-year plan um, with next year being the first year of that plan. And, uh, in doing that, we started with, um, a review and revision of the handbook, um, the Program of Studies book. So, this is a summary of the changes. Because we're looking to update over the next three years, we started with, um, twenty-eight edited course descriptions with a couple of course name changes that I've listed, um, on the summary sheet. The, some of the changes that I, um, I will explain to you are the world language courses that include a target proficiency level with every course now. Um, these levels are ratings, um, that are based, um, on the American Council of, on the teaching of foreign language. Um, the levels are described in each course. Um, they are intermediate-low, intermediate-mid or intermediate-high. And they are based on the level of the course and also the grade that you receive in that course. Uh, I do have, I did go on the website and I do have, um, if you're interested, I could pass it around but I do have, um, the actual standards of what it means to be at a certain target level, um, of proficiency in those courses. So, they are described pretty well. They're guidelines that just, uh, they actually determine proficiency on speaking and writing. The course title changes are just, uh, there's just two, actually three. We have decided to change American Law back to Criminal Justice. It used to be a Criminal Justice course. Um, and the teacher in that course has decided he'd like to go back to calling it Criminal Justice from American Law. Uh, we have an Introduction to Media Production course and we would like, it is in the Visual Arts Department and we would like to keep it, uh, in line, the title in line with our other visual arts courses. So, we are titling it Media Production One, which is a foundational course. And our Food and Nutrition courses are going to be changed to Culinary Arts. Um, we also have deleted some courses, um, some due to enrollment and some due to teacher or instructor availability. Uh, the Business Communications course, uh, is eliminated from the Business Department because the skills that are taught in that course are actually taught in all business courses. Um, which deleting that course allowed us to add a course called International Business. And so, this course, um, will provide students with a more global perspective of economics and the political structure and culture. And, um, will actually, um, I guess, inform students of how globalization has impacted our day-to-day living and personal finance. Um, we have also deleted a digital video course. Um, because we have a media production course and the curriculum was so similar, uh, we deleted the, um, digital video course that is offered in the Visual Arts Department. Uh, we have also combined two half-year courses in the Math Department um, to, uh, into one year-long course. Um, the two half-year courses are the Introduction to Trigonometry and the Introduction to Probability and Statistics. And we are now incorporating that cour- those courses into one year-long course that is called Math Topics. This is, uh, an option for a fourth-year math course. We have found that sometimes it is a struggle for students in their fourth year of math. And it's, um, easier for them to make it through a whole year uh, because it gives them time over the course of the year to improve their grades and pass the course where semester courses are difficult. Um, if you fail a semester course, then you have not met the graduation requirement so you have to find another way to meet the graduation requirement earlier. And the year-long co- course gives them more of an option. We also have eliminated, because of including the Math Topics course, we've eliminated the Modeling with Math course because that curriculum also is going to be incorporated into the Math Topics course. Um, Popular Music and Music Theory are also eliminated. That is due to a lack of enrollment and also teacher availability. Some of the other courses that we're adding, um, again, in working towards a three-year plan, um, we are going to incorporate an AP Physics One course next year. We do have a teacher who has taught AP Physics in another school system before she started here last year. And, um, she has the materials to teach AP Physics One, so she is offered to teach it. Um, she's teaching honors physics this year and feels that we have, um, many students that are capable of taking the physi- the AP Physics course. We are also going to offer an honors statistics class in math as a fourth-year option. Um, right now, we, the only option we have for an honors course in the fourth year is honors calculus. Um, and some students are not really going the engineering path. So, we're giving them another honors option with honors statistics. We hope to incorporate an AP Statistics course over the next two years. Italian Four, based on a survey of our students that are taking Italian Three right now, it seems that, um, there are numbers that would warrant us offering an Italian Four class next year. So, we are, uh, including that. The French Five course is actually not a new course, it's just a new title. Um, French Five is now called Francophone and Film Studies in French. So, that is really the only changes we have. And I, the, the book is changed a lot, but, um, it's mostly editing.
Does anyone have, Mrs. Burns?
I just have a quick comment. I have to say that I am truly disappointed. I understand, um, the logistics, but I am truly disappointed that we're losing two performing art, um, classes. That's really very disappointing to me, but understandable.
The performing arts is more now, um, the popularity is in the theater arts and that's where we have our numbers in the theater arts and the chorus.
But they're all so entwined with one another. So, but, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a quick point I want to make. I'm, I'm glad to hear that we're adding an international business course because that, you know, the economy that we're in, it's all global business and, uh...
And they're very popular classes right now.
Yeah, I, I guess it would be, but, um, yeah, I'm, I'm glad to see that. So, thank you.
Would you mind just explaining, um, at the bottom of the courses, you have primary academic expectation and then you have supporting academic expectation?
Um, those are related to our, um, academic expectations through NIESC. Um, in the, um, they're included in here. The academic, social and civic expectations are in the, um, beginning part of the program and every course is, every course is, um, has standards that meet the expect- these expectations. And they are the primary ones of what the course actually is focusing on and the supporting ones are ones that they may touch upon.
Oh, that's really nice. Did we have that before and I missed it?
Yeah.
Yep, I missed it. Sorry. I like that though. I think it's really great. It kind of gives a focus.
Yeah, I think, again, in the three-year plan, this is our, this is the first year related to curriculum. We are going to have a three-year plan related to assessment and, um, it will be around actually assessing those expectations in those courses.
And just one other question. On graduation requirements, we've had those, the same requirements for quite a while. Yeah, do we ever like decide to add to it or, I wouldn't think we'd subtract from it but I don't know with this new, um, program that we've been doing this year, does that cause a problem with the graduation requirements? Does it make it harder to, to do it?
No, um, we added the math over the last two years. We've added the math as a graduation requirement for four- for the fourth year.
Oh, okay.
I, I would say that the only consideration that has been made, um, in our discussions is adding foreign language or a foreign language as a graduation requirement, which we don't have right now. But that is something that we are looking at.
I think that'll be good, yeah. Very nice. Do you have any, Mrs. Burns?
I'm sorry, just a quick question. With the student internship, how many students are expected to, uh, participate in that this year?
We've had two or three over the last two years, but that's, again, it's another, um, it's another thing we've looked at over the next three years. We're, we're looking at a senior project possibly in the third year of this plan. Um, so, we're looking for more of this to happen, uh, with our seniors. But it's something that we need to plan for.
Sure.
Um, and address, if we're going to do it in three years, we need to address our sophomores next year and tell them this is coming. So, it's in the planning stages.
It's a wonderful opportunity to get that experience early on.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I would add, I, I received a letter which I forwarded along to Ms. Peters some time ago, maybe, maybe three or four months ago, from actually a former student at Wilmington High School, uh, now probably in his early twenties or so. Uh, and he was advocating that the community service requirement be increased from fifty hours to a hundred hours. Making a very compelling argument and, um... He was sharing, his story was around, his story was actually around his struggles with substance use disorder and that had he been required to perhaps be more engaged and spend more time in community service-like activities, that, that perhaps that would have, might have helped but it mi- it might help other students moving forward in the future. So, I forwarded it along. I don't, I don't know that, I, I just wanted to raise that, that, that's, that's a question. And I get that question every once in a while. Why, why fifty, for example?
They can certainly do more if they...
Mm, absolutely. And I think they probably do as well.
I think so.
I think they probably do a lot more than fifty, many of them.
You just look at the students who are in the Beris Clubs and the activities that they do that, you know, that go beyond just fundraising and that certainly adds on hours too.
Absolutely. Any other? Very nice. Thank you, Mrs. Peters. We appreciate it. So, um, we, we're going to make a motion to accept this or reject it. I'm assuming accept. Um, so, I'll accept a motion to accept the report of the Wilmington High School Program of Studies for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year. Mrs. Carroll, um, so move. And second, Mrs. Bonish, others in favor? Unanimous, Kim? I'll say, thank you very much. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it. Anytime you're able to speak too. You, you can certainly talk. Thank you anyway. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item of business is, um, public comment. Do you have any public comment? It's nice to have some public here tonight. It's just good. All right, um, other reports. Do we have any other reports?
I just have one quick...
Sure.
Day on the Hill this year is on April twenty-fourth if I'm correct. Um, where MASC hosts, school committee members at the State House. Strongly encourage, um, all representatives to make appointments with their representatives to discuss funding for the next upcoming year. Um, there's also been, I also want to direct if you haven't already seen that there's a lot of, uh, discussion on the MASC, uh, list server with regards to, um, the DESC's ruling of charter schools and the approval of those charter schools in, uh, Boston and Brockton, um, as well as, um, the discussion, uh, as to how the commissioner doesn't feel that impacts public schools and their funding. So, uh, that's something that we should really keep an eye on, um, as the year progresses.
Excellent. Thank you. That's true. We'll talk about that at another, maybe?
I just wanted to, uh, I, one thing that I neglected to have in my superintendent's report, date related. The Behavioral Health Task Force is in the process of organizing a Behavioral Health Provider Fair. Uh, May, the month of May is actually Mental Health Awareness Month. And on May twelfth, which is a Thursday, from three to eight PM, we're going to have a provi- we're going to have a provider fair invite mental health providers and behavioral health organizations to come in and have booths set up in the Wilmington Middle School cafeteria. And we've also invited them to provide thirty-minute breakout sessions on their particular area of expertise to parents and families. The Board of Health will be participating. We've reached out to town departments and agencies as well. I think Wilmington Police Department will be participating. And I think that the town itself too, the Board of Health, the town, the town itself is looking to find ways to do public service announcements and other ways to acknowledge Mental Health Awareness Month, including we'll probably find a day. Green is the color for Mental Health Awareness, so we'll probably find a day that we'll be wearing green. We'll be pulling out the stuff from St. Patty's Day and wear it. So, I'm very excited. First time we're trying it and, and we, you know, but we're happy with whatever success we have and we'll just build off of that.
Sounds great. Excellent. Really good. Okay, correspondence. Okay, so our future meeting dates would be March ninth and March twenty-third. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Burns, second. Mr. Bjork, all those in favor? Unanimous. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.